Good evening and welcome to the special presentations portions of the Moreno Valley City Council on February 6, 2018. Our first order of business is a business spotlight on glass fabrication, which is in District 1. Glass fabrication offers a quality, dependable, and affordable glass service with more than 25 years of experience. They are quickly becoming Moreno Valley's go-to business for all your glass repair needs. Located at 24-873 Sunnymead Boulevard, glass fabrication has been in business for three years in Moreno Valley and offers mobile glass repair and replacement services to residential and commercial clients throughout the inland empire. They pride themselves for their excellent customer service and same-day turnaround repairs. Today, we recognize glass fabrication with the Business Spotlight video. If you could please roll the video.
Broken window, we can fix that. Broken window at 2:00 a.m., no problem. Broken window in a large commercial building, easy. Need a custom mirror, you've got it. You need it today, we have same-day turnaround. Worried about money? Our prices are incredibly reasonable. Can't come to us, we come to you. Having trouble seeing far? Sorry, wrong kind of glass. Glass Fabrication, the best glass repair in Moreno Valley.
Okay, if Mr. Jay Artiaga can join us at the mic. Congratulations and thank you so much for doing business in Moreno Valley. So we present you here with a certificate. I'm gonna take some pictures. And we also have this DVD and a flash drive. So you can post this on your Facebook, on your website, anywhere. So your customers can see the wonderful business that you run here in Moreno Valley. We're gonna take some pictures. What do you want us?
Wanted to thank City Council for the acknowledgement. It's a great opportunity, you know, it's an honor. We've been doing business for some time now, seen the city grow. You know, overall, just wanna thank everybody for the, you know, acknowledgement. It means a lot. We'll take this back to the guys in the shop and they're gonna be real happy. I'll tell them to check out the channel, too. Thank you guys so much.
Let's give Glass Fabrication another hand. Thank you so much in our city. The next business spotlight is the Fade Cave, which is one of Moreno Valley's newest barber shops. The environment is a relaxed, family-friendly space and was designed to feel like a cave. The owners opened the business seven months ago at 24-525 Alessandro Boulevard, B2. So we're gonna have our mayor and our councilman, Ulises Cabrera, make the presentation. If you could roll the video.
At the Fade Cave, we do more than just haircuts. We offer top-quality, precision trims tailored to your specific needs. Whether you need that perfect fade or a razor-sharp lineup, we've got you covered. Our barbers craft the perfect style for every occasion. For the freshest cut in Moreno Valley, come to the Fade Cave.
Excellent. If we can have Jesse Rosales come up.
And tonight, we have the owner here, Mr. Rosales. And the second owner, the co-owner couldn't be here tonight, Mr. Hernandez, but they're both friends, locals here in Moreno Valley who graduated from Moreno Valley High Schools. And they're excited to offer their services such as fades, haircuts, beard grooming, facials, steam shaves, to all age groups. They pride themselves on their excellent customer service and are extremely grateful for the opportunity to give back to the community. Today, we recognize the Fade Cave for doing business here in Moreno Valley. And I have the certificate here that's gonna be presented by mayor.
So just wanted to say congratulations again to the Fade Cave. And I guess Alex couldn't be here today, right?
Yeah, he's in Mexico.
Okay. And by the way, I get my haircut there, too. So it's a really great place. I really believe it's a really nice little business that's there. It has kind of like a hipster look. So you should really go check it out, really nice place. So here's the certificate that we have here. Okay, on behalf of the City Council in my office, congratulations. And we also have this right here, too, so that way you can put it up on your Facebook or Instagram or anything. Okay, would you like to say a few words about your business?
I just wanna start off by saying thank you to everyone that came out. Thank you to the City Council for, you know, just letting this happen. This is a great opportunity for me, just turned 21, I'm super excited for this. You know, I feel like it's only been seven months and I feel like we've came a long way and I'm very happy that we've gotten elected. I wanna thank my family, I wanna thank my girlfriend, everyone for the support, for coming out. And we have more plans. Unfortunately, my partner isn't here, he's out of the country, but he appreciates you guys as well. I appreciate you guys, thank you guys for everything. Hopefully, 2018 is a better year for us and we keep going on with better things this year and more plans. And if you guys ever in need of a haircut, you guys have family members, friends, let them know to come through to the Fade Cave, we'll get them with a fresh haircut.
Another round of applause for the Fade Cave. Next on the agenda is the employee of the quarter and the mayor will present the certificate, the recognition to Joseph Huen from Facilities.
So if we could have Joseph Huen, right? Huen, okay, alright. You know, the last 30 minutes, I was trying to figure it out. Okay, great. Well, you know, it's really an honor to always present the employee of the fourth quarter or any of the quarters because I think it's really important that we recognize the employees that we have here in the city and especially when they go above and beyond something. You know, they have duties, you know, responsibilities, but when they take it upon themselves to really go above and beyond, I think it's important that we recognize them from my office, the City Council office, from the City Manager's office as well. On December 21, 2017, the city, silly, okay, the city celebrated the opening of its first new library location in over a decade. That accomplishment would not have been possible without Joe Huen, going beyond those expectations. From the first day the project was discussed, Joe was excited and energized with the project. Joe performed beyond expectations and he did it willingly and with a great attitude. Joe has shown with his efforts on the library project that he will go above and beyond his normal duties to ensure a project is successful and the city meets its strategic goals for Momenta Mobile. For this project, Joe spent many hours during the night traveling from home to meet with our contractor to ensure the process was being handled correctly and completion time occurred on time. Joe's efforts reflect how he embodies the city's customer service standard by always ensuring we do our best to take care of our customers. In addition to his work ethic and the enthusiasm with which he approaches his projects, Joe is very kind and helpful to the other members of Teen Mobile. We would like to thank Joe for all that he contributes to our city. Let's give him a round of applause. We have a beautiful plaque that we have for you for being in recognition of exceptional performance and for being the employee of the fourth quarter. Would you like to say a few words, Joe?
Sure, absolutely. This is truly an honor for me to accept from you guys. I have not been here very long and this is not just for me. This is totally a team effort for our department. I couldn't do the things that I do without the other portion of the team and so I just wanna say thank you to all of you. And team, thank you for bringing me in and putting up with my craziness at first and many more years to go, right? Thanks, guys.
Once again, another applause for Joseph Huen. Thank you to everyone that joined us tonight. That concludes the portion of the special presentations and we'll resume the regular council meeting in about 15 minutes. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Accessory Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on February 6, 2018 at 6:02 p.m. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Dale, Pastor Dale, the Senior Pastor of Faith Southern Baptist Church.
Please open and face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Oh God, of all people, we thank you that we live in the land of the free and that freedom is most visible in the religious liberty we all enjoy in the freedom of the church from state control and the freedom of the state from church control. Help us, Lord, to value these freedoms, to teach them to our children and to observe them in such fashion as to commend them to all people. We pray, Lord, that you will bless the council members today as they lead us in this experience of democracy. Bless our mayor, bless all the leaders of our city and the people of our city. We pray for our law enforcement and military personnel that keep us safe. Bless them, Lord, each one that is here tonight, each one that is working to keep us safe and to keep our community safe. We ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Dale, from Senior Pastor of Faith Southern Baptist Church. Thank you for coming. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Geiba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Protembaka?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Art Jaquez Nares, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Art Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sandsmeyer, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kurlowitz, Chief of Police.
Abdul Ahmed, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Mel Alonso, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works and Engineer.
Okay, thank you and thank you to the staff for being here today and for all that you do. Thank you. Just a friendly reminder that the city is currently offering Spanish translation services, so if anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out in the back of the room. Right back there. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially toward the individuals at the podium speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about issues concerning the city. Finally, I ask the speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for the business between staff's report and City Council deliberation and at that time I'll mention how much public comment. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There's again a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer, myself, or to the City Council. The City Clerk will call three names at a time. Please, once you hear your name, please, if you can stand by the side over there to be ready. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments, but any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments or if a council member chooses to address his or her closing comments right after the public comments. So Madam Clerk, any speakers for the non-agenda items? Or do you need time to?
No, we have, for non-agenda items, we have 13 speakers.
Okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead and do 30 minutes of public comments right now and then once it's at 30 minutes and I'll have you be the timer, just let me know and then we'll go ahead and move forward with the business of the city and then we'll come back to public comments right after that. So we'll go ahead and do 30 minutes of public comments now, then we'll do the business and then we'll come back to any remaining speakers. Okay, first three speakers.
Rafael Burguerras, Eric Hefner, Jorge Quintero.
And just a reminder to the public, if you're coming to speak on the item for the Theodore Street, that is a public hearing item, so it is on the agenda and you will get to speak on that item when that item is called. Okay, so this is for non-agenda items. Hey Rafael?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents, and our guests. I wanna touch on a little history today.
One second Rafael, Madam Clerk, can you put the?
I put it on, it's running, the timer's running at 2:51.
Okay, okay.
I wanna talk about a little history. A lot of people that live in Moreno Valley don't realize that in 1890, that's when really Moreno Valley was explored and we had visionaries that lived in Redlands because Redland was the spot where a lot of people that came to live in California went to Redlands. And a lot of them had visions for Moreno Valley. And I wanna talk about two of them. One was Justin Edwitt Govler, Justin, and Frank Edwitt Brown. These men had visions for Moreno Valley. They bought land and they started fruit companies, orange companies, Big Bear, Alexandria Development, the Reservoir. Lot of things came from Redlands to Moreno Valley. And that's why Moreno Valley can stand today because of these men's vision that started here. We wanna continue that vision. The land that they had once is no longer being used to grow oranges and fruit or have cows and sheeps or chickens. The land is brown and it's dry. If these men can turn in their graves, they will give us permissions to build on these lands that they once owned. They were developers. They gave this city hope and we wanna continue with the hope. We do not wanna stop development. The good thing about Justin's name, he used to be a street. Now it's Paris Boulevard. They changed his name. Brown has his own story. Brown started the reservoir. That water came to Moreno Valley. That's how Moreno Valley survived. That's how the cattle, the oranges, everything got water. But he has also a sad story because when the water fight started between Redlands and everyone else, we got cut off. We no longer had water. And you know what happened to the land? In the 1800s, it died. It became desolate as we see it today. We need to change that. We need to keep going forward. Name changes don't hurt.
Okay, thank you Rafael. Next speaker is Eric Hefner. Good evening, Mr. Hefner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Eric Hefner, I'm with Bridge Investment Group. We own a couple of apartment projects here in town, Ridgeview Apartments and the Reserve at Ranch of Elago. We also own the Moreno Valley Ranch Golf Club. The reason why I'm here tonight, the reason why I'm here tonight is because I've been listening to the innuendos, rumors, etc. about that we're behind a recall, any member of the City Council. I'm here to be on public to everybody at home, here, in the room. We have nothing to do with this recall at all, zero, nada, nothing to do with it. It's a city, we have nothing to do with it. The only thing we're focused on doing here is bringing this golf course back to life so we can begin play here this year and also expand our existing apartments into the driving range. We're also having plans to put in a YMCA youth group facility at our site as well. So we're really excited about the project. I think the project really brings a lot of things together for the community and to be associated with the recall, it's ridiculous. We have no reason to be involved in that. We are excited about our project at all and that's all we wanna focus on. So if anybody comes up and says that we have something to do with it, they're either totally misinformed or they're flat-out lying for their own purposes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hefner. Next speaker is Mr. Jorge Quintero. And then Jorge. And just so the public knows, it's an additional three minutes per state law for interpreting.
Because it's a dangerous street and the speeds, the cars go by at 50 miles per hour. For that, we did a letter with signatures of the neighbors. And what they did was just painted yellow lines with reflectors? And I think that was a waste of time because that doesn't help? And we turned the letter, but I believe that it's just a waste of money. Antonio Reza? He referred to the racist comments by Marquez? That hurts me because it's my community and they're scaring them with immigration? And he gets offended because he's not part of the community and it hurts us with immigration? Just because we're looking Latinos doesn't mean we're undocumented? No, I don't think it's. Those were comments were made to Amarillo Reza and Reza. That is not right, Mr. Marquez. Thank you.
And then just, and City Manager, and really quick, I'll just, we did bring that attention, Senor Jorge, to the City Manager about Chagall Street. And so we are working on that. I actually received an update, so I'll let him comment on that towards the end. Okay, but there is good news. Okay, alright, Colonel RW Smith, followed by Judy Moore and Jose Chavez.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protembaka, City Council, and all the members here. My name is Colonel Ralph W. Smith, retired Air Force. When I moved out here to this city, there was no City Hall. There was no mayor or anybody else up here. The city was farmed after we had done several things and made it a city by itself and got divorced from Riverside. But the reason I'm here tonight has to deal with one of the boards that I belong to, which is Joint Powers Authority and the Joint Restoration Committee. If you notice that the runway that's there associated with March Air Force Base runs east and west over the city. And some of the property that was donated to the city after March became a reserve base and decided it would get rid of some of the land gap property that was given to them by the Indian Reservation as much as the city also. And the reason for that is because the buildings here, including this one here, is only allowed to be a certain height. Now, I fly out of this Air Force Base several times a year, either in the tankers or the cargo planes or whatever. By belonging to the Joint Powers Authority, I would like to inform the city that the buildings built on either end of the runway in which some of these people in here have known me from the Joint Powers Authority and I've discussed this with them before, including the base commander, that the buildings have to be so far from the end of the runway on either side and the height of the buildings can only be a certain height off of either one of the runways that circle in the city. That's the reason this building is no more than three stories high. So they are building and the property is being sold to these warehouse factories. They don't understand what I'm saying to you all in the midnight. Some of the people have heard me speak through the Joint Powers Authority and about this same issue. And I would like to... And I would like to express that there are several other boards, rather than you and Ma, which is the FAA, Environmental Protective Association and others, to stop some of the production of these buildings on either end of the runway or things that won't be environmentally put in place to protect the cities, the people of this city. And I hope what I'm saying is going to take place because the people in the city.
Thank you, Mr., thank you Colonel.
In the protection.
Thank you.
Is allowed and I think it should be enforced.
Thank you, thank you. Next three speakers, please. Judy Moore, Jose Chávez and Eduardo Gómez. Sir, we'll have the bailiff, he'll give that. Good evening.
Hi.
Oh, could you speak a little more? Thank you to the microphone, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm here due to the ongoing issues that we have been experiencing for quite a while now. Namely, from May to February. My location personally has 16 filed claims with Moreno Valley Police Department due to vandalism, stolen fuel, theft, trespassing and homeless people. Not that I have anything against them, except for when they break into my vehicles and sleep in my equipment. I have filed reports.
Just move it a little closer. Actually, maybe we can have our media team just put the volume up a little more.
I filed several claims with Moreno Valley Police Department, a total of 12 at my location, along with four of my storage customers that have their vehicles either broken into or stolen. I've had numerous trucks vandalized for theft, fuel lines, windows, tires. It's just, I'm not getting any support from the police department at this point. I have filed these claims, they have them on flash drives. We've upped our security as far as, we put 150-foot chain link fence up, or not chain link, wrought iron, between the freeway and my storage facility because they were parking on the freeway, cutting the fence, coming through, stealing fuel. The homeless had an embankment, they had a homeless embankment going behind my building, so we've done that. A week after the fence was put up, they vandalized the fence, it cost me another $250 to fix that. We're talking about a $3,500 fence that was put up. I've had the pop team out. They were unsuccessful. I have my computer support representatives that watch my lot while we're closed. They call, he calls the police department, I get no response. I understand this is a, I've been here a long time, this is a very high crime rate area right now. I understand that there are more important things going on than fuel or theft at a U-Haul location in Moreno Valley. However, with 16 calls in nine months, you'd think somebody could respond. So I could catch somebody that's on my lot that is destroying my location. I mean, we're not talking a little bit of money here, we're talking thousands of dollars a month. And I'm not getting any support. So we have put up special cameras. We have increased our security with that, with the wrought iron fence. We've upgraded, we've installed speaker systems in the back with laser lights, trying to keep people, when they trip the lights, it tells them that they're trespassing, they're on private property and the police will be notified. I'm asking for help. I'm asking for the police department's help in solving this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And if you could just kindly just leave your contact information with maybe our police chief or bailiff? And then we'll open up a case to try to problem solve with this issue. Okay, because we want to make sure we get you the support. We have Jose Chávez, Eduardo Gómez and Joanne Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and the other rest of employers at Moreno Valley. And I do have good things, you know what I mean, to bring it up. I know we pay high taxes to our city. I know it, you guys have plans to rebuild the community park, put a new grass on it. And be honest with you guys, it doesn't need to do that. They gotta keep in their mind, priority, priority. You gotta be attentive, the street is bad. Speed limit, the officer or the police department, they can be a baby city for our street. No. So, I am requesting for speed bumps, it's nothing's been done so far. Too many political matters, okay? And the other thing I would like to bring it up is the other situation regardless of Mr. Márquez. Regardless of the discrimination, because that's the right word to say, discrimination. When you see the color, they are thinking because we are brown, they are illegal, be honest with you. That's not true. If you pinch yourself, the blood is red. Okay? So, and one thing I would like to bring it up regardless of those citations they're giving in our street. And I do believe, this is the representative because we tuned in the paperwork to fix the street. Because I was moving around today for like four hours in Moreno Valley and I was talking to the people, you guys are doing this? They say, no, we don't have any problems. So that means they prove to me with those people, they are do by purpose. Even that one employer that's, that take care of those kind of problems, you know, for fixing the yards and all kinds of stuff like that. They make one poor girl, she has like six kids. She was spending like $6,000 for her own. She's not owning a house, she's a runner. That's a violation right there, according to that particular employee from the city hall. So, I don't know who's around the show. If it is, if it is the lady or they have a boss to take care of the deal.
Thank you, Mr. Chávez.
You're welcome, brother.
Yeah, if you could maybe leave that information, her name and all that, and then we can find more information about that. Okay? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chávez. All right, we have Eduardo Gómez, Joanne Stevens and David, I don't know how to say your last name, Zeitz, okay?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem. It's good to be back. And the first time I came over here, it was a few years ago, about a recall. About all the garbage and I got involved because I was discriminated when I went to collect people to support the project to be here in the city of Moreno Valley. It really got me very upset to see the racism and discrimination because I was a Mexican. Then if you really see yourself in the mirror, you have to know that you are Mexican yourself. You look more Mexican than me, okay? But anyway, I want to tell you guys something. The people, the people who are against the progress of the city of Moreno Valley as the City Council members. Amen? And we have to call it like it is, don't go around the bush. Every time you guys do something positive, people, they're always against it, always against it. So you're either for us or against us, and it's obviously that you are against. But anyway, let me tell you a little, a couple of birds. It's an eagle and it's a chicken. An eagle has a vision, they can see ahead, they can see the enemy, they can see miles away. And they have a purpose, they soar high, they have a vision for the future. I want to, you know, continue to what Rafael said. With those people, they came from Redlands to Moreno Valley, they have a vision, they have a purpose. That's why we need people in the City Council and the city to have a vision, to see the future. The chisel, rock and chisel is way behind. Maybe it's for the new generations to take over the City Council, amen? But let me tell you a little bit about the chickens. The chickens, they're always in a little group. They poke and they don't see nothing but their nose, just down below. There comes the rooster, pokes them and takes off. That's the truth. So my question is, are you guys eagles or chickens? Chickens don't make decisions. They always let somebody else make decisions for themselves. Maybe you have to be told like to, the way it is. Maybe you need to wake up. Maybe you really need to know in search yourself, really, what am I doing here? And I'm for progress or to be stuck in the same old same. Look at around, look at all the new construction. Look at Riverside, look at Redlands, look Paris, come on, it's a shame, they're doing better than us. And what are we doing? The same instigators that were here a few weeks ago when I came, they're gone, you know why? Because they already know they're loose. So anyway, move on. The World Logistics Center is going to happen whether you like it or not, because the cities say we need the jobs. We want jobs and you know what? You just throw a little stuff, Guyba, come on, get it together, man. Oh, we don't want this because Edo hasn't done anything, you know what? Look around Skechers, look at the buildings he wants to build, come on, wake up. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is.
Hi, my name's Joanne Stephan. And, that's okay. You know, I really haven't been here in a while, a lot of people have commented to that, but you know, it's really sad and I didn't want to believe it, but now I hear so many comments about you, Ms. David. It's really sad. Because now I see why they did a recall on you. Because a lot of people do feel that you're being very discriminatory toward them, simply because of their race and that's sad to me because I myself am Hispanic, I'm Mexican, my name, last name was Barrera. Everybody thinks that, you know, I was probably born with Stephan, but I wasn't. But I would never ever slight anybody of any color, whether they'd be black, brown, oriental, yellow, you know, and it's sad when people feel that way. So I'm very sad about that, I didn't even know there was really that much bias there. I do know that every time three people voted, the other two, it didn't matter if the dog was walking across the street and they said it's okay, the other two are going to say it's not, simply because the other three are saying it's okay. And I think that's very, very sad when you have personal issues and you're putting your personal agenda before your constituents. Because I know that a lot of the people that are in your area, I don't believe they actually believe what a few do. I really don't. I've talked to a lot of people in this city, I've been here for 34 years and they've come up to me and told me, you know, that a lot of this is really, really just personal issues on both of you two. As far as Mr. Hefner, I'm sure glad that he came up and cleared everything because there was, everybody was saying that it was you that was back in the recall. So I'm glad that you came up and clarified that for everybody. Because that's what people should do, is stand up and say, no, I didn't say that. No, that's not the way it is. That's what, you know, really needs to be said. And as far as the U-Haul, Judy, I'd be getting the dogs out. I really would. I'd get some big dogs with some chains and, I'm sorry, it's private property, you get mauled, you get mauled. You know, sometimes you gotta take things into your own hands. So that's what I would do. But as far as these recalls, I'm so sick and tired, oh my gosh. You know, I'm above 70 here and I can't get out there and start with petitions and I'll do it, I'll do it. Because these cost the city money. And that's where I'm at, when you got a handful of people just want to do their own agenda and spend our money, that's where I say no. You know, I got the ten issues ready and I'll be out there getting signatures. But I don't want to do it. And so I hope these people are just smoking, you know, blowing hot air up their yang yang, as far as I'm concerned. Because this is ridiculous. So get your act together up there, boys. Because, believe me, there's a lot of people that will be out there and it's not going to be in your favor. It will be in somebody else's favor that's sitting up there, but not yours.
Next speaker. Good evening, David.
Good evening, I'm David Zeitz, pronounced it the last name. Basically, I'm not here to comment on any particular agenda item, anything anybody has bringing up, who's voting for what or whatnot. The one thing that I have happily seen tonight, but have not seen in other council meetings, is the proper control of the meeting. We have too many personal attacks towards the council, towards people in the audience and they let them run on and on and on. And Mayor, that is your responsibility to take care of that. If you need to shut things down, you shut things down until they calm down. But like I said, there's too many personal attacks. If they have a point to make, make their point, bring their facts and then let the council decide. But by calling other people's names or saying they did this, hearsay rumors, it's all wrong. And we're all adults, are we all trying to play like the schoolyard bully? If we can yell louder, we're going to get our vote or vote it our way? It's up to the council to decide. It's not a personal fight between people in the audience. You're here to bring up your point, make your point as well as possible without doing the slander and all the personal items that are not have, that have nothing to do with what's going on or that's happened in the past. Let's stick to the agenda items, stay off the personal attacks and let's have a peaceful, civilized meeting. And that's all I can ask for.
Thank you, David. And just to make a comment here, you know, I do believe in civility, you know, especially, you know, at this meeting and that's why I mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting. But per, you know, the First Amendment rights, you know, anyone at that podium can speak in those three minutes and say what they need to say. And so, so, nope, it's under the First Amendment. Okay, so we'll have the next three speakers.
Mayor.
Joanne Stee, oh, actually, is it 30?
It's 30, 30 minutes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and continue with the business of the city. And then the rest of the comments we'll hear afterwards. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, City Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority or the Board of Library Trustees requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. And we will go to any council items removed for separate action or council comments for discussion. Go ahead and press your button. We have Councilmember Guyba.
Yeah, pull A6 for a separate vote, please.
Councilmember Márquez.
A12 for discussion.
Okay. We'll go ahead and start with A12. We have approved the Fourth Amendment to agreement with Michael Baker International for the State Route 60 Theodore Street. And Councilmember Márquez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The reason I'm pulling this is, there's a lot of residents out there that don't understand what's going on with this project. I didn't understand it until staff decided to sit down or we decided to sit down and discuss this in length. And I was able to understand more about this. Residents look at the million dollars for the Theodore overpass and the first thing they say is, it just has anything to do with the WLC. Well, I wasn't here, up here, when the WLC was voted on. I don't know what occurred. But I don't have an answer for those people that asked, those residents that asked me, well, why are we spending a million dollars? That's Theodore, we don't have nothing to do out there. My answer to them is, we're trying to improve the city, improve our off-ramps regardless where they're at. And Theodore is one of the overpasses, just like we're looking at Moreno Beach Drive and Redlands. We gotta start somewhere and this is where we're starting. I honestly believe this has nothing to do with the WLC. This is something the city's been working on? And we should spend money and that's the only way we can actually make sure a project gets done. My question is this, how much more are we going to spend on Theodore? And I'll leave that over to the staff.
Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The specific question to close out this portion of the project, which is the PA and ED phase, which is the project approvals and environmental documents, this will be the completion of that. Get us to the finish of this phase of the project. Caltrans has a multi-phase stepped approach. The first phase is the project PSR, this was the next stage. So in order for us to move forward, we have to complete the phases that Caltrans has put forward to us. So this request for tonight would complete us or get us through the end of the PA and ED phase for the Theodore project. ED phase for the Theodore project.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
So, hey, Mayor. Okay, no worries. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, any public comments on the particular items of the consent calendar?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers. Rafael Burguerras, Kendrick Rivas, and Jose Chavez.
And just a reminder to the audience, uh, it does have to be in regards to the consent calendar.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents, and our guests. I wanna start with A twelve. Because, um, David Marquez had have told my district, District Three, to look at page four. Fiscal impact. There is no impact in the general fund. This money is a fund that's been gathered together that matches. These are funds that we are entitled to. That's why the staff got what they got. Because they were funds that were entitled to us. No physical impact in the general fund. Number twelve. Okay? That should have been told to them. Okay, would have solved a lot of questions and problems. But I wanna thank, um, Kath- Catherine Sanchez? Let me see. Uh, see, uh, Sanchez, Ms. Sanchez, for the new hirees in A seven. And the promotion that she gave, um, Gina Gonzalez. I'm glad to see that in the consent calendar. Number three. Money being spent to fix the firehouse, number sixty-five, because they've been vandalized. Our fire stations are being vandalized. So now we gotta buy security cameras and beef up our security around our firehouses. That's on the consent calendar tonight, and that should be approved. So we can have our equipment, our investment, people. Moreno Valley, that's our investment. We pay for these things out of our tax dollars. So we should have the right to invest our security to protect ourselves, so they can be ready to protect us and, and help us when we're in trouble. Okay, that's the fire department of Moreno Valley. Okay? Number eleven. Communication. Thank goodness, there's another company that wants to invest in the city of Moreno Valley. By, by, uh, JFK Park. I believe that's District Four. Thank goodness. That should be a vote for District Four. At least a yes vote from one councilmember, that's for sure. Those are the things that we're doing in Moreno Valley. Those are the things that our staff are doing for us in the city of Moreno Valley. That's what I talked about, history. History needs to continue on, so we can live well. That's our goal motto, is to fly like an eagle. And our last one, number twelve, I talked about it. The money's already, the money's already been raised by funds. No impact in the city of Moreno Valley and our general fund.
The next two speakers is Kendrick Rivas and Jose Chavez.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and fellow citizens. I would like to first begin with A six. I think you guys should go approve it. And number ten, I do like the safety enhancement through the fire stations, and I think that's a good thing for our city. And finally, number twelve, I like alternative two. Thank you. Bye. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Kendrick. Next speaker is Mr. Chavez.
Good evening again. Uh, I just like to bring it up again, uh, Moreno Valley Park. Uh, you know what? Please, stop that project. Why? Because that particular artificial grass, they sold like used one. My question is, who's gonna get that money when they sold the grass? Because so much, sometimes they make a lot of things, but they never show up with the extra money they do make it when they sold used stuff. So they don't say nothing about it. I know so far it's gonna cost, uh, about one million dollar. I believe, um, I heard so always, city, they are in budget. But they not in budget when they going to rebuild the park. That one doesn't have nothing to do, it's still in good shape, good conditions. So they got something else, like I say, please. I really would like to, to city councils and mayor, take it around Moreno Valley City and look in around, what place is priority? Before you guys spend, oh, my question is, that I saw, they gonna pay a million dollar to redo it? Or the city, or, or taxpayer, that's the right word? So, and like I say, you know, it's, we are in the wrong way. Spend the money for nothing. I know it. I have investigation and everything already. They do pay the, the electricity. They do a lot of things. But if you go into deeper in that particular part, they make a lot of money, brother. You guys, I don't know if you real know the real true, or try to skipping around. It's, I don't know, really, really. I got surprised yesterday when I saw on the internet. So, I, please, make a section for that particular proj- project. Stop. And looking around the street, our city is gonna going to look much better if you order the street that in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Okay, we're gonna go to, um, back to the, um, gonna close the public comments for the consent items and entertain a motion.
Also moved.
Motion by Councilmember Guyba and a second by Councilmember Marquez. Accept item, uh, A six. Kane is passed five zero. Uh, we're gonna go to item F, actually. And, uh, it'll be A six. So, uh, okay, would you, do you have any questions? Yeah, for separate vote.
Oh, thank you. I'm not going into the details, but I read over all the applications. And since the mayor puts this out as a slate, uh, we have no alternative but to vote for the slate. But there was an application that I was not impressed with. I did not think they would be qualified for their position. I won't bring it forward, I'm not here to embarrass anybody. But for those reasons, I don't think one of those applications is even qualified, uh, after I read over the, the applications. We don't get a chance to interview them, so, uh, I can only go by the application that I had. Thank you.
And any public comments, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion by council?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protembaka, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Kane is approved for one. We will go back to item E. And we will go to public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes, uh, per individual, uh, depending on how many speakers we have, uh, per item. I'll, I'll address that at the, at the time. And must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the sergeant at arms. So we'll start off with E one, which is the public hearing, excuse me, for the four National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System mail ballot proceedings, report of public works.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, again. Members of council, I'll have, uh, our special districts division manager, Candace, give the report. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protemb, members of the city council, Candace Castle, special districts division manager. This item is a public hearing for four property owner mail ballot proceedings for the NPDS program. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is a federally mandated program to control pollution of stormwater runoff. As a condition of approval to develop their property, the four property owners are required to provide a funding source for the NPDS program. Funds collected for the program will offset increased costs the city will incur as a result of the projects. The property owners have requested the city apply a parcel charge onto their annual property tax bill to secure the funding. Before the city can do so, however, the property owners must first approve the NPDS rate through individual mail ballot proceedings. The city clerk can open and count the four ballots after the city council conducts the public hearing. Each of the property owner's ballots will be counted individually to determine whether or not they have approved inclusion of their respective properties into the program. If a property owner approves the ballot, the parcel charge will be applied to the tax bill of only those parcels identified on their ballot and will not impact any other property. Staff respectfully requests the city council conduct the public hearing and upon its close, direct the city clerk to open each ballot and announce the results of each. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Candace, for the wonderful presentation. Uh, we have council questions of staff. Seeing that there's no one, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimonies, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Final.
Hearing closed. Uh, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, number two and three, to direct the city clerk.
So moved.
And verify and accept the results. Okay, motion by Councilmember Guyba and a second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, please vote. Once it pops up.
I mean, yeah, to, to, I mean...
Councilmember Guyba?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Mayor Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes five oh.
Oh, okay.
Um, let me read the results.
Oh, okay.
For items two and three.
Okay, I thought you were gonna, okay.
I have one vote, yes.
You were gonna count it.
For Prologis. Yes. And then I have the other vote for Moreno Indian. It's a yes. OM MacArthur. The ballot is not marked. And then Duke Realty. The vote is yes.
You, you, you have affirmative votes on three of the four properties, and I would recommend that you take action, whatever action you intend to take on, on those, those properties.
I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, number four and five.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mayor Protembaka, second by Councilmember Guyba. Please vote. It's approved, five oh. We're gonna go to item E two. And this is the declassification of landmark status of Theodore Street from North State Highway Route sixty, so just north of the freeway, and, uh, south to Cactus Avenue and renaming of that segment. So I believe, uh, we'll have report of community development.
Yes. Yes, I'll be happy to give that report. Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a proposal to declassify the...
Can you speak a little more into the...
Yeah.
Move it closer, there.
The item before you this evening is a proposal to declassify the historic landmark status for a portion of Theodore Street in the east end of the city. As I start, we've had some comments about the word declassify. Uh, when we use the word declassify, other words that we could have used would be remove or to repeal. So I just wanna make sure that it's understood that when we say declassify, if there's any questions on that, our intent is to, to basically take away the landmark status for a portion of the street. The portion of Theodore that's under consideration is the portion extending from the north side of the State Route sixty freeway, and it would extend south to approximately Cactus Avenue. The portion of Theodore north of the State Route sixty would remain a landmark status and would retain its current name. Uh, this concept, uh, for the proposal was before the city council on January ninth. And at that time, the city council directed staff to initiate an application for the street name change and the declassification of the landmark street name status, which is a necess- which is a necessary step in order to change the name. The application for the street name was filed with the Department of Community Development on January twelfth. Upon receipt of that application, staff agendized that request for consideration by the Environmental Historic Preservation Board, and the Environmental Historic Preservation Board considered this matter on January twenty-second. In considering this matter, they supported the request on a two-to-one vote for the declassification of the roadway landmark status. And in their recommendation, they also recommended that the name change not take place until the development of the World Logistics Center began. The historic landmark status on the street name Theodore was established by the city's previous cultural preservation advisory board in December of nineteen eighty-nine. At that time, the Cultural Preservation Advisory Board established that landmark status for many street names. The street names, yeah, in the north-south directional flow were considered to recognize the proper names of investors who had had some role in the establishment of the early towns and the land that has now become the city of Moreno Valley. Notification of the consideration of this item by the Environmental Historic Preservation Board was put in a letter that was mailed out on December twenty-ninth to all of the residents that could be potentially affected by that. In that letter, we were careful to also identify that this matter was gonna be considered by the city council. We did that, uh, to err on the side of caution to make sure that the, the community was aware that this item was coming before them. This item was also public notice for this city council meeting this evening, which has been agendized as a public hearing. In accordance with our municipal code, the notification had to be out ten days in advance of this hearing, and that notification was placed in the Press Enterprise, which was an eighth-page ad, and the notice was published on Friday, January twenty-sixth. This evening, the city council has been requested to do three things. The first recommendation is that the city council certify that this proposed declassification of landmark status and renaming of Theodore Street from the north portion of the freeway bridge over State Route sixty, southerly to Cactus Avenue, has been determined to not be a project as defined under the state environmental quality act guidelines. And per section fifteen oh six one B three, it therefore qualifies under a general rule, common sense exemption. That's the first request we're asking. Second, we're asking that you approve the resolution, before you, the resolution of the city council of Moreno Valley, approving the declassification of the landmark status for the street name Theodore Street, for that portion of the archway from the north portion of the freeway bridge over State Route sixty, southerly to Cactus Avenue, and approving the name change to World Logistics Center Parkway. The third recommendation is to direct staff to implement that name change in a cost-effective manner. I do wanna point out that the recommendation before you this evening does not include the language that the Environmental Historic Preservation Board had, had included, which was to not make the name change until after the, the World Logistics Center project began construction. Uh, we believe that's under the discretion of the city council this evening. The Environmental Historic Preservation Board was, we were clear in our presentation to them that their role in advisory capacity was to advise on the landmark status, but the discretion for the name change and when the name change take place is really with the city council this evening. With that, I'd like to conclude my, uh, staff presentation. We are available to answer any questions.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Rick Sansomar, for the presentation. Uh, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, council questions of staff, and then we'll just do one round, uh, here. So we'll have... So we'll have Councilmember Gaiba.
Rick, how many, how many people are on the historical preservation board?
There are seven positions on the Environmental Historic Preservation Board, three of those seats are occupied. The three that occupy constitute a quorum, the other four seats are currently vacant.
So why are four seats vacant out of seven? My question would be to you is what would be the possible outcome? Pure speculation, of course, if all seven were seated versus just three.
Mayor, honorable council members, if I may, I don't think staff really ought to speculate on what could happen if there were other people.
Don't speculate on it. There were supposed to be seven and seven were never seated, we only had three.
Well, there's.
Councilmen, we don't have any information on that.
Yeah, I know, am I correct about that though?
Councilman, there were three people seated on that board, it constitutes a quorum, the board met.
Were there supposed to be seven normally seated? Have they been removed in some way?
Councilman, as the acting community development director.
Just ask your question, council member.
Indicated, there are seven seats, three are filled.
Thank you for that very much. And number two, is there any precedent for naming or what do you sign, declassifying any landmarks in our city around other industrial complexes of any other kind of developments?
I am not aware of that specific action being taken in the past.
So this would be a precedent, am I correct Rick?
I may not have enough information to answer that question thoroughly, but at this point.
I appreciate it.
I, I don't know.
You don't know, I get you. Thank you.
All right, any other council questions, seeing no one else has pushed their button? Go ahead and open the hearing. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have thirteen so far.
Okay, so given that we do have thirteen speakers, I am gonna limit it to one minute per speaker. Please come up as we call your name, three speakers at a time.
Dylan Lyons, Frank Wright, Brandon Karn.
Yes. You're Dylan?
Yes, I'm Dylan, Dylan Lyons. I recently just moved to Moreno Valley, been a homeowner here for about a year. Not speaking, yeah, they can hear me, right, you guys can hear me? No? Alright, I've been homeowner at Moreno Valley for about a year. I recently got out of military probably about a year ago, but one of the things that attracted me to this place, it's a potential to grow. So I feel like changing the name of the street is a good significance of that. And also this Theodore gentleman, I'm trying to do research on him, only came up with a little bit, but he hasn't done anything super significant for us to be worrying about the street name change, so.
Honorable Mayor, have a lot to say in one minute and I can say this, history shows progress. We live in a state of progress, we can't live in hindsight, we've gotta keep going. Our country's built on history. Pony Express started with carrying mail on horses, then went to the trains and then now it's airplanes. And we've been changing names, changing places ever since. The city named, um, Sonny Mead was changed to Moreno Valley for the fact to enhance the city of the location and to draw in more people. So we've gotta look back. History's fine, but hindsight's in detriment to progression. We've gotta provide for the people that's coming in this nation, in our country and even to our city that's coming up development because they're gonna make changes too. So we've got to have progress. Riverside Anaheim. Orange County, they're gonna eat us up if we don't make a progress and we've got it to do. So in Nevada, they said if you see a progress, pull the trigger and fire.
Okay, thank you Frank. Okay, thank you.
The staff is on fire.
Okay, thank you Frank.
We've gotta do it now, thank you so much.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening, I give you three main reasons, I've been to both meetings, I'll give you to them now, to oppose this item. One, there's tons of streets in this city and other areas of infrastructure near houses and schools and businesses that currently exist that need this type of funding now while in advance of a project which currently isn't even under construction or even built in any phase. Second is, why are we spending so much money towards a development, a private development for signage and other notification from the city? Highland Fairview could donate well over half a million dollars to elect the majority of you on the dais through super PACs and other election forums. Why are they not paying for their own advertising, billboards, signage and other types of promotion? The city doesn't need to do that and I find that to be almost a conflict of interest. And the last part is, there are street names already here, to the base, the hospital, the community college, they don't change the name, they just put the name of the place that they're going underneath the main street, change name. You don't need to spend taxpayer money for something and if there is a street name change, let Highland Fairview pay for it or let them rename a street in their own property.
Thank you Brandon. Next speaker we have is Joanne Stephens, David Zietz, we have DeNira Sanchez as well.
Well, you know, nobody said anything when the city paid for the auto mall sign, I don't see anybody crapping about that, you know? And as far as I'm concerned, you know, Gaiba, you need to talk to the people in your area because I'm in your district and I don't see anything wrong with naming that street, that part of the street, the World Logistics Center Parkway, I really don't because when that thing comes in and it's coming, sure as crap, it's gonna set us on the map. I've said it time and time again. Anaheim didn't want Disneyland, but now look at Anaheim and I grew up in Anaheim and born and raised there. So you know what? This, this thing about the World Logistics Center, it's gonna put us on the map. I've said it time and time again and nobody craps when other money is being spent somewhere else, all of a sudden Highland Fairview, Highland Fairview. You know what, I'm, I'm tired of hearing about that. So you guys need to just approve it, there it is, the, the historical side as he did, who cares?
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Renaming the street I think is unnecessary. Besides the people that will possibly be working at that center, who's gonna drive there? Somebody gonna come driving in town and say, where, where's the World Logistics Center? If it's gonna be that big of a deal, MapQuest is gonna show it. Just like Lake Paris, they didn't change the street to Lake Paris, they just put a sign under it saying Lake Paris this way. People are not ignorant, they'll figure out where it is. If it's gonna be that big of a deal, they're gonna know where it is. We don't need to change names, put breadcrumbs to where they need to go. And besides that, it's not built, hasn't broke ground. Even if you guys do decide to do this, at least wait until ground is broken. Then you can make it your big celebration. Thank you.
Thank you David. We have DeNira Sanchez. And we have Antonio Ressa and Kendrick Rivas, if you could please be ready. Okay, good evening.
Good evening Mayor and city councils. I have a short speed today. Okay, I'm DeNira Sanchez and I've been a Moreno Valley resident for five years now. I just, I just came to say that I support the name change of Theodore to World Logistics Center Parkway. Because it supports and promotes jobs coming to the city, okay? So we shouldn't fight what will help our city to grow with more opportunities. Please support the name change, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, DeNira. Next speaker is Antonio Ressa and if we can have Kendrick and Santiago ready please. And Antonio, we'll have a.
Gracias.
Okay, so that'll be.
Thank you.
The two minutes, dos minutos.
Gracias.
Thank you.
En las pasadas campañas.
In the past campaigns.
Residente de Moreno Valley.
One second, pastor, one second.
We set the timer for him, okay.
Okay, ahora.
Decía que en las pasadas campañas como residente, como persona.
Past campaigns, me as a resident, some person.
En las casas y en las calles.
I was on the homes.
Yendo el voto para, para Mister Gaiba.
Asking for the vote.
For Victoria.
For Victoria. For Exia.
For Ulises.
And for Ulises.
Y los cuatro ganaron.
And four of them won.
Y vengo a recordarles que están allí.
I came here to remind you.
Marquez.
You are there.
Tengo nada personal.
Next to Mister Marquez, I have nothing personal.
Con mis hijos.
The comment that happened.
Fue triste y.
It was sad.
Tal vez te pasó y pero no tengo nada personal contra usted.
It happened, but I have nothing against you.
To desculparse con ellos.
Hopefully you can apologize to them and then we can put it back.
Pero queremos ver hacia adelante.
But I wanna see forward.
Estamos aquí porque queremos el progreso de la ciudad.
We are here because we want the city's progress.
Mister David.
Like Mister David said.
Atacar.
We didn't come here to attack you.
Pero no podemos callar.
But we cannot remain quiet.
Pito de gente mentirosa.
With this small group, liars.
Usando las mismas mentiras para hacer recall a personas, como dijo en el pasado.
That you did in the past.
Quiere controlar la ciudad.
You want to control the city.
Detener el progreso.
Do you wanna stop progress?
No vamos a callarnos ni a detenernos.
We won't stay quiet, we won't stop.
Si a las calles y a las casas, porque yo estoy mirando a los miles de jóvenes estudiantes que van a ser ayudados.
We're going to, out to the streets and I can see a lot of students that are being helped with the project.
Que van a ser bendecidas.
These families will be blessed.
Ingresos que van a abrir a la ciudad.
The income that will come to the city.
Queremos a nuestra ciudad, respetamos a nuestra policía, nuestros funcionarios.
We love our city, we respect our police.
Queremos ver progreso.
Administrators and we want to see progress.
Prosperidad.
We want to be prosper.
Para todas las familias.
Better life for every family.
Espero que nos unamos y lo hagamos por bien de todos.
I hope we get united and we do it together for everybody's sake, thank you.
Thank you, next two speakers please. After, it is Kendrick Rivas, Santiago Hernandez and then Roy Blackard.
Hello, I just like have one issue with the ending Parkway. Again, I should, I would recommend that it would be renamed Way or Drive because Parkway is inappropriate for a city street unless it's gonna be more lengthy than normal. So I would advise every council member, should we consider renaming it whether Drive or Way, thank you.
Thank you Kendrick. Santiago and then Roy Blackard.
Yes, my, I mean, good night, everyone. Mayor, councils and the staff, they, the best stop around Orange, I mean Riverside County.
Alright, okay.
And I'm in proud to change the Theodore name for World Logistics Parkway because all the great projects got their own name on it to identify it and be, be noticed. Like Disneyland have Disneyland Way. Six Flags has his Six Flags Street or Parkway, I don't, I don't remember. And you can name it, Knacks Berry Farm have his own name on the street. Why we don't wanna have.
Thank you.
Ours, change it.
Thank you Santiago. Roy Blackard, Pete Blackard, Rafael Brugueras and then Luis Palomares.
For all you history buffs or experts, way back in the day when that was all dirt, what was commonly known as Highway 60, south of the road, the road that you commonly know as Theodore was called Pepper Tree Lane. And why? Because it was lined with pepper trees. But most of you would not know that because you ain't been around or you don't know the people that were around back then. So, if we're going to, that's why Pete said, keep Theodore where it's at because that was always commonly known as the historical part of Theodore. And none other than George Price said, after WLC passed, I support it, I'm gonna make it the best project it, it should be. That's what everybody's goal is. We rolled our hand, we put our cards in it, everybody should knight and make it the successful project it could meet. Because if we don't, we'll all fail. So you should pass the name change, we should get on with it, the history's preserved onward and upward for Moreno Valley.
Thank you Roy.
I, I go along with the name change, you already heard what the other side was. So, you know, it, it's the thing, don't put the caveat of what the historical preservation was with the building, construction. They've already started buildings construction, so that don't count, I don't know, I, you know, if that building ain't there, then I guess there was no construction. But since already construction started, so why put something on it? Last thing I wanna say, all these people are hollering about what it costs to do money and everything. Previous council people changed the name to Moreno Beach. How many people knew that that was Hendrick Ranch Road, which was one of the biggest ranches here? Which the city now owns the ranch itself and you got electric company on it. So, yeah, we changed names and a lot of other ones, I can go through history, but that's, it'll go, but do pass it, thank you.
Thank you Pete. We have Rafael Brugueras and Luis Palomares.
Good evening to everybody, real quick. There's already something on Theodore, it's called sketches, sketches is there, that is the beginning of development, okay? Okay, Brown, like I mentioned earlier, Brown. What people don't know, that Moreno Valley should have been called Brown Valley. But he changed it to a Spanish name, it's called Moreno Valley. That is history. He, he, that's history. Another name that's history, Henry, Henry Pettit, Pettit, okay? Now, he has an interesting name, you know why? Because Moreno Beach used to be his name and they changed it when they built Paris Lake to attract people. Parrot Street would not work, that's why it's called Moreno Beach and people still laugh at it today, where's the beach? Right? But if you look at Moreno Valley, it has grown to be a successful, successful part of the city.
Thank you Rafael. Okay, next speaker we have Luis Palomares. Almost sounding like a party back there. Okay.
I was asleep on the switch, I was listening, I was listening to Rafael, wow. Well Pete is opening up a history book, wow. You gotta ask some questions about this valley, Pete knows it. Okay, now, they're making a big old issue about the name change and all that, but you know what? If, if it wasn't suggested and you guys didn't take it further, the council members in the middle, the mayor, Mrs. Baca and Cabrera, it wouldn't be an issue, but because the two bookends, Marcus and Gaiba, you know, I'm telling you, if God came down and built it, they'd be against it if you suggested it, mayor, okay? So that's what it's all about, it's all about revenge and hate and doesn't the Lord say revenge is mine Gaiba? Man of God, hypocritical. Again, let's talk about the money. When we gave all that money to the auto mall, that was fine, when all these people did recalls left and right, that was great and LaDonna's back on the bandwagon with the next recall. Oh wow, God has better things for me now that I lost my seat, but oh wow, saying all that.
Thank you Luis. Alright, we have.
No more. No more speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
No more speakers.
Oh, okay. And then I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. And we'll go ahead and move to council deliberation. If you have anything to say, please press your request. Okay, we have Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Okay, I for one.
And we'll just do one round.
I for one support the name change and I think that being the home and the center of the, first of all, being the center of the island empire, we're a very important city, we're the second largest in Riverside County and we've been growing since I moved here in 1990. I mean, I, I think there was only, gee, I would say about 180 residents at that time and we're almost at 209. So that, that's, that tells us a lot and we've grown, we've built lots and lots of homes and we have an imbalance, we need jobs. So we need to put the World Logistics Center that, which is already an approved project, it was approved before I was elected. So I've always been a proponent and supporter of jobs for our residents. We need to get our people employed, but more importantly than that, we gotta keep them off the freeway so I can get to work in LA. No, just kidding. But it, it, those, the, the traffic is horrible because everyone in the city, if not everyone, at least 90% of people are driving out of Moreno Valley on that 60 trying to get to work in the morning and it starts as early as five o'clock in the morning, the traffic. So I think that we need to advertise far and wide what we're doing here in Moreno Valley and I think this is a start of something wonderful, something great that we're doing here in, in the city to announce the World Logistics Center and I support the change of the name. And, um, I support the, uh, uh, change of the name. So, um, I hope I can get support from my fellow council members.
Okay. Any further deliberation? Okay, Councilor Marquez.
Thank you, mayor. Lot of residents out here, especially here in the, um, chambers. You know, everybody has their own opinion and I respect that. And ask that in return for us up here on the dais. I'm not against changing the name. What I'm against is putting the name up there before a project is built. We have no control over WLC when it gets built. It's a done deal. And like I tell people, let's get over it. If it's gonna bring jobs, then it's gonna bring jobs. But how can we put a sign or spend any money, 10,000, 15,000, whatever Caltrans, the cost they, they're gonna give us? Why can't we just wait, um, I didn't interrupt you when you were talking, sir.
Quiet back there, please.
You know, what's the rush to this? I'd say, let's wait until the project breaks ground, then we change it. For some reason, you never know, we might come up with some money, somebody might donate the money for the signage. Why can't we wait? Mayor, I, please.
Okay, I want to remind the audience, okay? Please be respectful, okay? Please be quiet while he's, he's speaking.
So let's wait, just like the, the commission said, wait till we break ground. And then, let's put the signs up. Again, maybe someone will donate money for the signs and the city doesn't have to come out with the funds. I have no problem with that. And I have no problem with the name change. Let's just wait, that's all I ask. My decision is to wait until it breaks ground and then let's replace the signs. That's all I'm asking. And my vote is, that is going that way. Just wait till we build or break ground and then change the name. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Marquez. Okay, any further deliberation? Not, I will close the deliberation. I'll just make a comment and then, uh, actually, I'm, I'll go ahead and just close the deliberation. Okay, I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations number 1, 2, and 3.
So moved.
A motion by Baca, second by Cabrera. And it's approved 3-2. We'll move on to item G1, which is the consideration of ordinance, reauthorizing peg fees for the state cable franchisees. Report of city attorney, please.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. This item is before you for your consideration to basically re, uh, reapprove an ordinance, uh, that pertains to the peg fees. The public, educational, and government access channel, um, fees provide, uh, at this time roughly about $510,000 to the city. Uh, and that money is used, uh, for government access channel operation, uh, which addresses local municipal programming needs. Uh, the, the revenue stream has been coming. In 2006, the state, um, took over franchising of cable and video providers, uh, under the DIFCA law. And they issued a 10-year franchise, uh, to all of the operators. That franchise has been renewed. And there is some question as to whether or not our ordinance needs to be renewed as well. Under, uh, the current language, basically it continues to operate. Uh, we're here before you to simply re, reapprove the ordinance. Uh, there's no changes to it. It'll just button that down and make sure that we can continue to, um, collect the peg fees without any, uh, question or any, uh, any problem. Uh, with that, I'll gladly answer any questions.
Council questions, the staff, we have, uh, Councilor Cabrera.
Thank you, I do have a quick question. Um, those fees, are those set by the state or do we pick those here inside the city?
The, the state law controls the amount of the fees, but the fee is, fee is set by the ordinance.
Thank you.
Checking to see anybody else push the button, no? Okay, so we have public comments, madam clerk.
None.
Okay, council deliberation. You have a comment? Alright, we have, I'll go ahead and close that. Entertainer motion by council to approve staff's recommendation.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Councilor Cabrera, second by Mayor Potem Baca. Okay, please vote. Okay, it's approved 5-0. We'll go ahead and move on to the remaining, uh, public comments. And those are from the non-agenda items.
Maria Fields, Kendrick Rivas, Bob Palomares, Roy Blackard, and Luis Palomares.
Okay, and then, um.
Good evening and guten abend. My name is Maria Fields and I like to speak behalf of a businessman on Sunny Meet. His name is John Chavez. He has a upholstery shop. Today I went to see and inquire about my antique chairs and as many times I have visited him, because I've done many business with him, he shared with me that his business will be closed down, that the city is interested to not have his upholstery shop no more because it is the wrong zoning. I looked it up in my husband James where it is, Mrs. Baca, it is in your district. So, you just mentioned a bitter goal, that you offer jobs. He has his wife employed and brothers and some other helpers. Full-time or part-time, I do not know, it doesn't matter. He will not know where to go. He has no place to go, he's renting. He is the best upholstery place guy in the world. He works for the police, he for the hotels, many, many, many people. People who value his trade. If he would be closed down, there will be no upholstery guy in Moreno Valley nearby or anywhere else. People come from far in here. So I don't know if anyone ever will speak up for the small man. He's truly one of the smallest businesses in the town next to me, being self-employed as a housekeeper and the best in the town. So, I ask you that you do not close this, that you consider, again, he is the smallest of small, probably to you no, no value. But if you do need any upholstery done or anyone else, please go see him. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. We have Kendrick Rivas and, uh, I'm sure, uh, Ms. Baca will follow up on that.
Hi. I have only one question and the rest is speech. How much does a traffic intersection cost? I heard they cost like probably $300,000 for a traffic signal. And then, second, I would like to ask the council to reconsider to post agenda back to 12 days and to untable the decision to add more council members to it. And lastly, this is the last week of, this is the last week of school and finals. And the last week, not this week, I did a paper in the World Logistics Center and it was a position paper. My position was oppose the World Logistics Center. I watched all of the, between 34 to 36 hours of the planning commission and the city council. And I saw a bunch of news articles about the project. It sounds good, but when you actually look at it in deep print, it will not benefit the future citizens up on the valley. Future, oh, future residents that will not be, that now would want blue collar jobs, more like white collar jobs. And I will again ask the city council to reconsider to post agendas for 12 days and to untable the decision to add more politicians to the council. Because you, the council are mostly politicians and you guys know the importance of being a politician. And adding a politician to council gives it more opinion and thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendrick. We have Bob Palomares, Roy Blackard, and Luis Palomares, please.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. Mr. Gaiva, the last time at the city council, you made a statement about the Aqua Ballot project, that, you know, they failed and, you know. It's not true. They didn't fail, they used their head. They seen the economic downturn coming. That's why Mr. Benzivius, who he is, a big-time developer, so he stopped it. You know, who builds houses when there's houses to give away free almost? That what was going on then? The bubble had burst. That was '05 when it was just before it started. So, he's a pretty bright guy. You should take that into consideration. And, um, Mr. Marcus, you were saying about, we should wait and, you know, about money, maybe somebody will donate or what have you. But first of all, I think you owe those two young ladies an apology and you should be mad about it and do it. That's all you have to do. You know, it takes a big man to admit he was wrong and say, okay, you know what? I'm sorry. Because, you know, you're concerned going back to the money. When you were working for the city of Manabalo, not Baoflour, or any for else, I know you were working. And they fired you because you used excessive force on minorities. How much money did you cost them? I know you're gonna come up and say, I never was. Well, if the press enterprise had any, you know what? They'd do the research and prove me wrong. Thank you.
Next speaker is Roy Blackard and Luis Palomares.
It's all about having honest conversations. I got that from doing an interview with, uh, the Honorable City Councilman Chuck Conder down in Riverside. We were having a discussion about another issue on that. We had reasonable and very enlightening discussions on the issue. I brought this to light because I was down at the county this morning. They had a resolution about DACA and to support it or not or whatever. But, the resolution got amended, so it included both sides. And they came together and said, we really need to work on a solution on both sides of the problem. I see that's what we need to start doing in this city, across the board. Not only in this body, but in our school districts and everything else. We need to start coming together and doing what's right for the city. We need to start showing a united front. We need to start dealing with things honestly. We need to start dealing with the facts. We need to stop twisting that or making narrative, false narratives that are not there, all across the board. We have many things in this city and I'm not going to mention them because it just brings more light to it. But each of us individually can stop, stop the hate. Stop the madness. Stop tearing down the city. Because it's only, not only hurting you, but it's hurting everybody in this community. And it's something that I really feel that every one of us should take a look at everything we're doing and every action we're taking. Not only think of the consequences it's going to have on me, I, but how it affects everyone else. Because, yeah, you may benefit, or you may think you benefit by making a small victory on a small issue, but we all benefit when we work together. We all benefit when we work to a common goal. And that's what we should be working for. We should be working for that common goal, that we're gonna make Moreno Valley the best city it can be. We're gonna make Riverside County the best county it can be, the state of California and the United States of America the best nation in the world that it is. And that should be our main focus when we come to these public meetings and when we address these bodies. Again, like I say, we should be having conversations. We should be dealing with the main object and that is making quality of life better for everybody.
Thank you, Roy. We have Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, I agree with everything Roy says. We tried that for years. The recalls came and everything else. We tried that. We've handed out the olive branches to Gaiva and Marcus, but no, they sit like dead ducks up there, they don't do nothing but tear down everything that wants, like this name-changing, numerous things, this ain't the only one. You two, you three, in the middle, the mayor, Cabrera, and Mrs. Baca, Mayor Potem, are trying to take the city into the 21st century. And only because it's you that's trying to do it, they don't want it, right? The, the staff sees the light, they see what's going on, they've been here working, they're doing a fine, excellent job. They could see the writing on the wall, but these two can't. Because it's all about bent, unhated, and revenge. And we tried to work with the EastEnders, the terrorists of Moreno Valley, the, the prices of Moreno Valley. We tried all that, it don't work with these people. I would love it more than anything else, but they won't budge. They won't. So we have to go forward and focus on what we need to do then. Okay, now saying all that, here we go. Uh, let me get my notes here, because I only had a couple of minutes, I thought, so here we go. Okay, and it, it, it's true to say, they're starting on the recalls again, they're worrying about money. Price, you're worrying about money. Ladonna, you're worried about money. Are you, are you crazy? Don't you get it? It's insanity. And you're all involved in this, Marcus, whether you say you're not or, yes, you are, okay? I'm glad the young man, the older man here came today to clear up, we're not involved in any of this. We're not involved. And I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. You know, because we're hearing a whole lot of other things, but that's good. He cleared the record, thank you. Now, as far as Ladonna again, when she lost her seat, well, of course, she came in through the back door, like the political prostitute she is, and she's still doing, and there's no change in her. She said, oh, well, uh, when, you know, she lost her seat, because, uh, all her record and all her bank robberies and everything came out. So she ran again, when she came in through the back door and lied about Mrs. Baca. Okay, so she ran for the seat again, she didn't get in there the second time, you know? Because we were here stating the facts, not lies, the facts, the truth. But she was at doors knocking about Mrs. Baca with lies. And then she said, when they wanted to do something about her and recall her, oh, let's do away with all the recalls, all hypocrisy. When she's all involved in this recall, oh, uh, God has better things for me when she lost the seat. Well, I don't think God had this plan for you to get back in a recall. Yeah, God forgives, do something different. But she's still up to her same old annex, the same old lies, the same old bashing, all involved in the recall with Marcus and all those EastEnders, uh, Mr., uh, uh, what's his name over there, uh, Price. And it's true. And if you want to stay up there and do some damage, Cuzco, we don't believe it. You're a liar.
Thank you, Luis. Thank you, Luis. Okay. Any more, uh, speakers, madam clerk? City manager's report.
Thank you, mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the council. Uh, just a few items responding to topics that came up in tonight's discussion. Uh, first, a gentleman asked about the cost for a traffic signal. Uh, generally, it starts off at about a quarter of a million dollars, uh, but it can go significantly higher depending on the costs associated with purchasing right-of-way. Uh, any other site prep depends on the topography that may be required to, uh, that we'd have to overcome to create a fully signalized intersection. Uh, another question had to do with adding council districts. Uh, we talked about that, uh, on January 9th, uh, with the council. And, uh, in the report that went forward, we provided some cost estimates that were developed in 2010. Um, at that time, uh, the projected cost was about $42,000 in one-time costs for furniture and computers and office space and an additional $175,000 in annual ongoing costs. And again, those were 2010 estimates. A couple of other things, uh, a gentleman asked about the installation of speed control devices on Chigal. Uh, I'm pleased to share that the city will install speed tables on Chigal. Um, these are similar to speed humps, but they don't have as great an impact on emergency vehicles that, uh, fire engines and fire trucks specifically that would need to traverse that area, uh, to res-. that fire engines and fire trucks specifically that would need to traverse that area to respond to emergency calls. We also plan to close the median at Alessandro and Chigal. That would eliminate the left-turn option that currently adds traffic volume on Chigal. So instead of cutting through the neighborhood, vehicles that are going to the apartment complex would travel north on Frederick Street and then enter from the west. So that's really good news for our community members in the vicinity of Chigal. And lastly, a resident expressed some concerns about development that could potentially impact the viability of the runway at March Air Reserve Base. I'd like to reassure the Speaker and all residents that the city works very closely with leaders at March Air Reserve Base and at the Airport Land Use Commission to ensure that projects do not impact the airfield. We are proud that March Air Reserve Base is part of our community and has been for nearly a hundred years. And we are committed to its long-term viability, both as a national defense asset and a regional partner. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Manager, for that comprehensive report. Hopefully, that answers several of the residents' questions and concerns. City Attorney, any report?
Nothing to write. Thank you, Mayor.
And then we have City Council Reports and Regional Activities, which is H1. Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on the, I'll be providing an update on the recent Mark Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on January the 24th. In that meeting, the commission approved the final map that allows expansion of an existing forty-eight acre site to accommodate additional parking for UPS. We also approved a boundary modification for the foreign trade zone to expand Skechers FTZ site to include its new facility on New Hope in Marino Valley. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for the brief report. We have Councilwoman Marquez, Riverside Transit Agency.
Thank you, Mayor. Riverside Transit Agency has completed their upgrades of more than twenty-five hundred stop signs system-wide. The new information signs provide each location with its own unique four-digit numbers used to receive real-time bus arrival information through the free Bus Watch app or text messaging. To use the service, go to rtabus.com. RTA this winter had a youth promotion where it, twenty-five cents for youth. If they want to go to the beach, anywhere RTA went to, it was only twenty-five cents. Through January, December 15th through the 7th, they had a ridership of twenty-one thousand. Twenty-one percent ridership increase from the same date last year. And they're asking for the public to continue taking public transportation and also look forward to similar promotions later this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marquez. For the Western Riverside Council of Governments, it's very brief here. The Executive Committee approved a resolution authorizing agreements with the Department of Transportation for the Regional Climate Adoption Toolkit and Transportation Phase One Project to include climate-related components for Western Riverside County. Work on the toolkit is scheduled to begin in May 2018 and complete by February 2020. The Western Riverside Energy Partnership was another thing that was discussed, and that assists with local governments in setting an example for their communities to increase energy efficiency, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, increase renewable energy usage, and improve air quality. The city of Marino Valley participated in the Related Direct Install Program and it achieved a savings of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Actually, yeah, fifty-eight thousand dollars in savings in 2017. The Active Transportation Program was also discussed, and there's several, they actually were able to identify several challenges and opportunities for creating a safe and efficient and complete active transportation network that expands active modes of transportation in the region. The program report identifies high-priority trails, pathways, and routes for walking and biking to increase regional mobility options, and will present it in final form to the WR COG committees in March. Next, we have Councilmember Gaiba for the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority.
Thank you. Very short meeting. Somebody was actually timing it, fourteen minutes. All right, so our closed sessions go longer than that. So just very quickly, we have already fifty-eight point two thousand acres into the system. Remember, this are conservation lands. We acquired another three-hundred-and-twenty acres for a total of fifty-eight point six thousand acres. We also discussed the, I call them the critters of the month, but they have the animals and the plants and the species. There's a mountain yellow-legged frog. You can read on that, especially you teachers out there, on, when you go to the link in my bio, there's a link there to go to the RCA, and then you'll see a special button. You can just push that to get to the species of the month for you on that one. And we did bring in four, we did approve four more properties in closed session. The average timeframe to actually acquire all these properties and go through the process they have to do is anywhere from six to nine months. So probably won't be adding those in anytime soon. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gaiba, and if you could also give your SCAG report, too.
Be happy to. Went to SCAG. I have another meeting on the 21st, so there's a lot of meetings. Nice thing is, is this was the first, first meeting of our brand-new building. It's the large, or the tallest building west of Chicago. So it's now being occupied by us on 16th and 17th floor. Not easy to get in because it has special access capabilities with our cards that we had to put in for. Most of the discussion was just kind of updates on what we're going through. I was invited down to dinner and spend the night down there on Wednesday so that we could kind of go through and get a tour of the facility. It was really very, very nice. Our digs are cool, and the rent is less than it was where we were on 7th Street. So that's a good thing. Mayor Garcetti came by and spent about forty-five minutes sharing with us. I had a chance to have a talk with him as well of the 2028 Olympics, which LA will be hosting, and they'll be spreading the wealth around. So I'll keep you apprised of that. Additionally, SCAG voted, and Hassan Akkara, the executive director, crafted a letter of support for HR 4667, that's known as a flinghauser, supplemental appropriations for disaster assistance because of the, now remember, I gave you the update that they were waiting for the disaster assistance and throw that extra money in there for the Hurricane Harvey Irma and the California wildfires. It's the tune of eighty-one billion dollars. If anybody would like to see that, I'd be more than happy. If you email me, I can send you a copy of that letter that Hassan wrote. And that should be it. Thank you.
That brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. Okay, we have Councilwoman Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, I sure got attacked tonight, didn't I? Anyways. I generally don't mention names from the residents that sit out there in the chambers, but tonight I have to. I've got to defend myself. Mr. Palomera, I give you all the permission, and I'll waive my rights, to go to my Montebello Police Department records. And look why I'm no longer there. You have every right, my permission, and I will call them tomorrow to release all my records of my employment to you, Mr. Palomera. If you believe that I got fired and I cost the city millions of dollars, go for it. And then you come back to this council, and you stand up there and you apologize to me, because that's what it's gonna be. You people come up here and you think that you're gonna hurt, bother me because you come up with these lies. You got something else coming to you. As for this recall, fine. You claim I de-graded women. First of all, it started with one female. Now it's two females? Please tell me what I said and where I said it and to whom I said it. My office door is always open. I don't care if there's fifty people. You come in and see me, and we'll sit down and discuss this. Who, what, when, and whatever I said it to. I have no problem with that, but I'm not gonna sit here and not defend myself because I have to at this point in time. Next thing, this week, we broke ground at a new warehouse. And I was proud to be there, to see this happen. Solis Paper broke ground to build one of the largest paper manufacturing companies in Southern California. And I'm glad to say it's in Marino Valley. I don't take credit for it because I was not on the council. It was approved prior to me coming on, but you know what? I say to the previous council members, thank you, because we do need business like that. I know a lot of people say, well, you know, we don't want no more warehousing, but we do need jobs. We do need jobs. And that land out there will stay dry until these developers that own that property start developing on it. And yes, I want jobs here in Marino Valley. I don't want to see them back on the freeway, these commuters. So I'm glad we did that. And if Skechers is gonna extend their facility, that's even great. That's even more profit for the city. Anybody out there, regardless if it's in District Four, District Three, District Two, hey, I welcome all development, all warehousing, and we're building homes. Why? Because people want to move to Marino Valley. And hopefully, we can keep their jobs here in Marino Valley where they don't have to commute. Next thing I have, and I want to say staff, and I always say it's staff. All of you, you're doing a great job. You know, the awards, we just recently got another award. I mean, how many cities get these awards? People want to come to Marino Valley. They want to come to Marino Valley. Because it shows what our staff does. They care for their city. And I want to thank you, each one of you. From the city clerk, city manager, city attorney, to all the staff, you guys are doing an awesome job, and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marquez. And we have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. So actually, the majority of the council was in attendance at the groundbreaking of the Prologis Warehouse over where Solaris Paper is going to be the tenant of their largest building. Also, there were many people in attendance, but I do want to thank Mike Lee, you know, the economic development. Just everyone knows who Mike Lee is and the entire team, so thank you guys for what you do in, you know, bringing these businesses and everyone else who's a part of that as well. I mean, all of the staff as well. I say thank you to you all the time, but we can never say it enough. And also, I know the Fire Chief Ahmad was happy about opening Eucalyptus all the way over to Redlands, you know, to assist the fire department, that's the station that's right there. It's gonna be right next to the new development, so I'm glad to see that. Also, the, the, yeah, the cameras at the fire stations around the city. I know that's really important, and that goes hand-in-hand with the camera extension that we're doing for the mailboxes and all of that. So again, thank you for what you're doing on that. I did want to mention there was a community cleanup on January 27th. It was about thirty or so people who were out in District Four. Thank you to everyone who came out and helped, for the departments who helped organize all of that, the guys back behind the glass for helping me with marketing and advertisement materials. We're looking to have another one on March 3rd, and we're still getting all of that organized, but I'll keep everyone up to date on that event, so you can come out and assist, and we can help clean up the city a little bit more. And lastly, I just want to, I guess, refresh, refresh everyone's mind and myself as well that, you know, to be honest to ourselves and to remind ourselves why we're here. And that's, I mean, to help other people. And I said this in the last council meeting, but it's to help other people and to give back to the community, to our family, and even people who don't agree with us. People who will say things contrary to our beliefs or what we're doing, but, I mean, don't return that negativity. You just make it worse. I mean, try to help those people honestly, and the truth always comes out. So anyone who tells lies or makes false accusations, the truth always comes to light. And so I just want to remind everyone and myself to remember why we're here and to stay honest and true to ourselves. Thank you.
Councilmember Gaiba? Oh, did you, oh, okay. Councilmember, actually, Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
All right, just want to make sure. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the staff for the preparation of the report for the World Logistics Center Parkway. I want to say thank you to the community that came out to support the change and to move forward with progress. I was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony this weekend for Baskin Robbins. Many of us, old people, know it as Thirty-One Flavors. When I was there on Saturday, they said they had forty-eight flavors. Unfortunately, I only tasted two, but they're my favorite. But I just, I just want to say that, you know, we have so many good things, so many great things happening in the city of Marino Valley. And it doesn't just happen. We have the staff, we have the process, we have the city council. We, you know, we just invite people to please move to Marino Valley where great things are happening. I was also at the groundbreaking ceremony for Solaris Paper, and many people were posting, where is this? And if you get off on Marino Beach Drive and go south, I'm sorry, yeah, south, towards Eucalyptus, where the Auto Center Mall is, and make a left, it's right there where Eucalyptus Street ends. And you'll see the big earth movers there, and it's moving forward. And it'll be there sooner than you think. I just want to thank staff for making this possible and, you know, getting all the permits and whatever it takes. I know that you guys can do it, and you do do it. With that, I want to say thank you to our city manager for addressing the comments that are made at the podium by the community members that come out to complain or to praise or to raise concerns, whatever they are. Thank you for addressing them and not letting them go to the next meeting. Because, and I know that some people will get phone calls regarding the issues that they brought up that we can't resolve tonight. And I want to remind everyone that we still have a lot of construction going on on Day Street, which is District One, so keep looking and watch the traffic, be careful with the, the speed limits because, you know, it changes there. So be careful, and thank you.
Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you very much. First of all, Bob and Louise, I want to thank you very much for voting for me when I ran and putting my sign up on your back wall. Very much appreciated. You had a lot of confidence in me. I haven't changed in three years, so I just want to make that clear. Yes, I was one of those who did approve the World Logistics Center. I investigated very deeply. I spent three years in the Planning Commission prior to being a council member, so I really go through those EIRs. And I considered it a good project. I think where you guys are misunderstanding me sometimes, and I want to make this very clear for you. I approve the World Logistics Center, but I don't approve of showcasing or favoring one developer over another. We should be a city that's fair to all our developers, not just one. In that case, that's why you see when I disagree with some of those things. The project is good if it gets built. Bob, I want to re-correct you on that one item you made. I mentioned that he never was able to build the airport. He never was able to build his, on the east side, his home development. And he never finished up on doing that. He actually asked to take the development agreement out. I forget exactly the language, but I'm quite sure you guys understand what I'm saying. I never said he failed. I said it was never done. And so those were three projects that were never completed. And there was a comment by our city manager I wish to correct. On January 9th was a study session for the six districts. There was no discussion. It was tabled, if you remember correctly. There might have been a staff report, but staff reports are nice, but that's where dialogue, discussion, discourse comes in handy to parse the information so the public can understand it. That did not take place. And you said it was discussed. It was never discussed. So I just want to make that kind of clear to the public so they understand it. understand it. I was also at the groundbreaking for the, uh, uh, for the paper, Solaris Paper. I'm proud to say that I was involved in it, in approving that Prologis project and on both the, uh, um, city council as well as my previous time as a planning commissioner. But I do have an important question for the, for the Chief of Fire. Who got all the rest of the paper products? All right? Did you guys get that and take it back to your offices?
It was equally distributed to all of our stations, yeah.
Yes, for those that didn't know, they did bring a bunch of samples, and they said they're for you guys to have it, so we were discussing, hey, they should probably go to the fire departments, you know, because it's right here by them. Uh, I also went to the ribbon-cutting for the, uh, Baskin Robbins. That's in District Two. That's my district, and they were gracious enough to say, Jeff, because I explained to them that I always showcase with my Javas and stuff different, um, um, different businesses around the town to spread the wealth around, so to speak, and, uh, but they don't open at nine o'clock in the morning, so they were suggesting, Jeff, we'd love to host an ice cream social for you from eleven to one in March. So I'm working on that right now, so for all of you people that'd like to come and visit, have a chat and visit and have an ice cream social, uh, Baskin Robbins was very, uh, they, they jumped on, they like me to hold one there for them, and I'm, I'm happy to do it. I did have my Java for Jeff over at the, um, Paris House of Crepes this past Saturday. A nice turnout. A lot of public was there, and a lot of announcements were made, so I'll give you two good announcements, and, actually, Mike, I'd like you to do it because I don't want to say the wrong things, but there are, the festival and the, um, Lake Shore Village, could you kind of update us on that one so I, I know there's only certain things we can say, and I don't have the talking points for it, okay?
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, members of city council, uh, with regards to the festival center, it is currently under escrow, and they're going through the process, um, and it should come before the Planning Commission shortly and, uh, before the city council. Uh, I'm sorry, what was the other center?
The Lake Shore Village, up where we call the Ralph Center.
Okay, uh, with respect to the Lake Shore Village, that, that property has, uh, now been sold. It is, uh, with a new owner, and they are assembling a team, uh, to come to the city to, uh, propose, uh, a future project on the site.
Yeah, thank you. And I know Mike and I have been working on those property sites since I was elected and he came on board, and it's, it's taken a lot, right? Because they're, they're family-owned trusts sometimes, and you've got to get them all together on the same page in order to get something done, so, Mike, thank you so much for all the hard work and efforts you put into that for our city. Uh, these are going to bring us not only some new developments and some better stores and areas, but also, if I understand correctly, some jobs as well. So thank you, and, uh, thank you, staff, for helping out, and I really appreciate everything you do. Thank you. God bless.
And I would just like to, uh, say and, and, and also make a, an announcement that our city actually was awarded, uh, an award, uh, from the California Association of Economic, and actually, I have it right over here somewhere, but basically, it was Economic Development, California Association of Economic Development. They awarded, uh, the City of Moreno Valley and, and of two other prize winners, we were one of them, uh, the Award of Excellence for the Promise Initiative Partnership that we have with the college. So this is something that, um, this, uh, last, uh, year, actually, that I helped, uh, champion along with, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, uh, to bring to the council, which is to have, uh, more college tuition stipends offered for Moreno Valley residents, for our college students. Uh, so because of that, the California Association, um, went ahead and gave us, uh, this award, and will be going to accept that award i- in March in Monterey. So I want to really just thank our staff as well, you know, for, um, making sure that, you know, we're looking out for those awards and, uh, really working in partnership with the college as well to get that program up and going, uh, right away, and, you know, the contract, when we were working on that contract as well. I also want to, uh, mention that I'm very glad, uh, that we went ahead and we approved, uh, the, uh, extra security cameras for our, uh, fire stations. I think that's really important, you know, because I think the, the firefighters need to feel that they're safe, and I think that was a big concern that we had, uh, back there, so I, I'm pretty su- I'm really happy that we took that initiative. And then also, I just wanted, wanted to, you know, remind residents and, and also remind some of my supporters, you know, a lot of the, uh, speakers that came tonight, you know, many of you have been my supporters, many of you have walked for me, and, you know, I thank you, you know, uh, so much, uh, but I just want to give you a friendly reminder that, you know, I started this, uh, Marina Valley at Work newsletter, which is something that we send out to thousands of residents to talk about the good things that we're doing in the City of Moreno Valley, and I really believe that we're doing a lot of good things in the City of Moreno Valley. In the past four or five years, well, five years, okay, that I've been here, um, we've been doing a lot of great things, a lot of initiatives that haven't happened even from the previous councils that were here. So, you know, I really would encourage everyone, you know, when, I mean, obviously, it's your First Amendment, you know, you can speak about anything, it's your right, but really think about, you know, who's listening, you know, to these videos, you know? We have other businesses, business communities, they're, uh, watching this, and, and we do have to have, like Roy Blackard said, I think, um, he said it really nice, uh, you know, we need to have a united front. We need to show, uh, that we're business-friendly, and, you know, if the business community is watching things like this, you know, it, it doesn't look good. So, um, I just want us to be respectful towards each other, especially when we have speakers at the podium, you know, if the audience can please remain, you know, quiet, just, just out of respect, that would make the meetings a lot better. And then I just want to remind everyone that if you have any concerns or, or questions, you know, I'm always available, you know, reach me by cellphone. I always give my cellphone number out. Uh, we have the, uh, open office hours every other Friday, or you can seek an appointment. Uh, our staff is also very, uh, available as well, so if you have any of those questions, you know, come see us definitely, and I know that each of the council members are, are really open to that. Uh, this is a very, uh, open council, you know, uh, we're, uh, very open, you know, to meetings and things like that. And, um, with that being said, I do want to mention that we are having a, uh, meet and greet, uh, at the, uh, Cupcake Espresso Bar with the school district, and so this is, uh, for the residents to get any questions answered, you know, about the school district or even about the city. Um, this is something that, uh, Councilmember Cabrera and I are also, uh, joining, uh, forces here, uh, to, uh, to carry this out and, and, you know, just to kind of have a great, uh, conversation, you know, with the community about what the city is doing and then what the school district is doing, and then also to hear from your concerns. We want to hear from you. So I do want to invite everyone to that meeting, which is February seventeenth, Saturday from eleven AM to one PM. Please come out and, uh, show your support or your questions and concerns. Thank you so much, and we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight oh six PM.